Okay, this meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting dates sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger on January 6th, 8th, sorry, 2014, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue on January 8th, 2014, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are on your right and your left. Assistive listening devices are available. When you step up to speak, please speak into the microphones. Mr. Perfetti, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible)
Clerk, may I have the roll call?
Mayor Burt Mittler?
Here.
Councilwoman Erickson?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Here.
Councilwoman George?
Here.
Councilwoman Malley?
Here.
Councilwoman Potts?
Here.
Borough Attorney Schmier?
Here.
Borough Administrator Kovak?
Here.
Okay, let's have our council reports. Councilwoman Foster Dublin, would you start us off?
Sure. I want to report that last week we visited the Chief Risco and I and our first aid squad, Captain and Becky Lauer. We visited David Lowenstein. We visited St. Peter's Hospital, and they just opened a new emergency preparedness area. And pretty much it's the, what they've showed us, they gave us a tour of their new area, and it's a triage area. So for instance, if there was supposed to, if someone was exposed to a chemical spell or some kind of infectious disease, there's a specialized area that that person would come into, and they would, it's a decontamination room, so to speak. So they'll either be showered down before they are admitted into the hospital per se. There is also areas for, they've seen a lot of activities since Rutgers is in the big games now, that for persons who are intoxicated, they have an area where they can detox them, so to speak. They also have a specialized area for children, for children with chronic diseases or illnesses, that they have that service that they're offering. And one of the things that I was in particularly excited about is that when our ambulance services provide services or bring patients to the hospital, they have an area where they provide really nice refreshments for the ambulance services, and also an outdoor locker that will store any equipment for those fire, for the first aid squads that are left back, that everything will be stored and kept in a safe area, so the ambulance crew can retrieve their material. Overall, it's a really good facility that they've put together. It's all brand new, and they gave us the opportunity to see that if we ever needed their services, that it would be provided to us. That's it for St. Peter's. Our police department, our new police complex, a dedication will be on November 2nd at 3:00 PM. Everyone is invited to attend. It's been, it's been about 18 months since we started construction, and it's just about complete, then November 2nd will be the dedication of that facility. A number of months ago, back in May, there was a group that came in, and they were concerned about the traffic patterns on Route 27. We did the traffic study by our police department. It took time, and they did a study, and that research and study that they did was forwarded to DOT, so I'll keep you posted on the findings of the DOT to let you know. People are advocating for a light or some kind of traffic calming device on Route 27. That study was done, and it was sent to DOT, so we await their response. Last but not least, daylight saving times is just around the corner. It's November 2nd. Remember, change your batteries in your fire, in your fire equipment around your home, and also carbon and an X-ray detector, please change those. And just remember that we want everyone to be safe. This week is Fire Prevention Week, and there's a whole study and learning opportunity going on in the schools, so remember, change your battery, stay safe, and that's my report.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin, the November 2nd dedication is going to be held at 2:00 PM. Let me change it now. Sorry. Correction, it's now 2:00 PM.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Potts?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to report that the Teen Advisory Committee has begun their activities, they're starting their season out for this fall. They are going to be having elections, I believe, tonight. They was postponed from a previous date that was set, but they are getting started with their elections this evening. In fact, that meeting is supposed to begin around 7:30 this evening at the Senior Youth Center. The other thing I just wanted to mention is the annual Halloween Costume Parade and Festival. That's going to be on Sunday, October 26th, and that'll be from 2:00 to 5:00 PM at the Highland Park High School gym. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Potts. Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. As of last Friday, there were non-reported cases of enterovirus D68 in Middlesex County and more than 500 nationwide. Enterovirus D68 is a contagious viral respiratory illness and causes difficulty in breathing. First symptoms are make the common cold, but for the rare few, it is fatal. We just can't say enough about prevention and informing you about this. In the past week, we distributed health notices from the New Jersey Department of Health, Freeholder Paulus's office, and the Middlesex County Department of Health, and the CDC. The best prevention is frequent handwashing with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. Hand sanitizers are not at all effective on enterovirus D68 or noroviruses. The best prevention is frequent handwashing with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. Please, everybody, stay healthy. On a brighter note, tomorrow morning, for Bartle and Irving families, join us tomorrow morning, Wednesday, October 8th, to celebrate Walk to School Day. We'll be gathering at Raritan and Fifth. Bartle children leave by 7:40, and Irving children leave by 8:00 AM. Thanks to their escorts, Principals Benjamin and Wyzezansky, and Lieutenant Gary Panacella. Thanks to Peter Bilton and Keep Middlesex Moving for organizing. This whole program is to promote safe paths to school, and we thank everybody for helping our kids get to school safely. We've just started distributing emergency radios that we received through the Park Partners grant. We bought 55 of the American Red Cross radios. They're hand-cranked. They even have a phone recharger on it, and we have identified about 35 individuals in town in need that can use these radios. We're distributing them now. I'd like to thank the mayor and our attorney, Ed Schmier, for finalizing the contract of sale for our Habitat for Humanity project. Thank you very much. We'll be moving on that shortly. Look for more information on our website and a link to the Habitat website. A quick thank you to Gabrielle and Tomas Andrade. These are schoolchildren who donated the money that they earned from the sale of their old toys at the September Townwide Garage Sale, and the donation was made to the food pantry. That's a wonderful lesson for young kids to learn. And a couple of notices coming up later this month. Our week-long event, Find Your Place in the Park, our Board of Health has organized on, for Thursday, October 23rd at 7:30 PM, at Kinetics on Raritan Avenue. An evening on nutrition, fitness, and health. I'd like to thank Diane Heimlich, the Chairwoman of our Board of Health, Metrolundy of Kinetics for participating and for offering her facility. And we'll also have, I believe, a chiropractor and a nutritionist on hand to talk about nutrition, fitness, and health. Also that week, on Saturday, October 25th, at 2:00, a presentation at our library. This is the second time we're presenting a special on service dogs. Thanks to our Chair, Diane Feldman, of the Universal Access Commission. Pat McKenna and his service dog, Garcia, will be there. In fact, the last time we did this program in April, he brought a video, he had, he put a camera on the back of his dog and showed us a dog's eye view of life through the eyes of his wonderful service dog. Also, Kat Petshower from Rutgers Seeing Eye Puppy Raising Club will be on hand, too, and she's got the cutest German Shepherd pup right now that she's training. And I think that's all I have right now. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, Councilman George?
Just briefly, Mayor. As I reported last month, the redevelopment agency has been undertaking a reexamination of the redevelopment plan, which was originally drafted in 2004, 2005, pre-recession and pre the changes in some of the retail and restaurant spaces on Raritan Avenue and elsewhere in the borough. At the last meeting last week, they really were engaged. They were in the nuts and bolts of evaluation. The professional planners, who are also commissioners on the board, as well as the residents on the board, were going through it line by line and making some significant changes that reflect where Highland Park is right now and where it may be going. And I hope, Mayor, that we have that available for the public to look at drafts. I think they're planning on having it come out sometime in November. In addition, I'm meeting with Main Street Highland Park next week. As you know, we've been working on trying to place more benches at the bus stops throughout town, on Woodbridge and Raritan, along 27 past the doughboy heading to Edison. We've located a number of spare benches, both within the Main Street District that match that style and outside where we use the old cast iron benches. And hopefully, we'll be able to actually start installing some of them very shortly, but we're trying to combine it with a program where the public is able to donate and have a bench named in memory of a loved one, or to celebrate an event, or whatever. So we're meeting to hopefully get that moving next week.
Sounds good. Councilman Erickson?
No report.
Okay. Council President Malley?
Just a brief change in our agenda, just to alert people in the audience that may be here for this issue. Item number 14, the sidewalk amendment repair ordinance, will be tabled tonight. In review prior to the meeting by the mayor and council, we felt the ordinance was still unclear, and we want an ordinance that both, you know, expresses the actual, let's say, proper code and regulations, but also makes it clear to the public what the responsibility is. So item number 14 will be tabled, but will be brought up at our next meeting, and we will have a finalized amendment at the 21st or 20th?
21st.
21st. Thank you.
Okay. Borough Administrator?
No report, Mayor.
Okay. Borough Attorney?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I have a few things. I was privileged to attend our Recreation Department's Flag Games for Cancer on Sunday morning. It was an event to raise awareness and funds for both pancreatic cancer and breast cancer. It was a very moving event. There were testimonials from survivors, and some pink and purple balloons were set off into the air in memory of family members who had passed away due to these cancers. It was a wonderful event, and I hope that more of our residents will turn out for these kinds of events in the future. Councilwoman Welkowitz mentioned before that the radios for emergencies were purchased through last year's Park Partners Program. I'm excited to announce that this coming year's Park Partners Program is open and running. If you have any ideas for programs that would benefit all of the residents of Highland Park, and if you would like to put some thoughts together and present a grant proposal, as we did last year, we will be giving out five mini-grants of $2,000 each in order for you to make Highland Park an even better place. So look for information on this on flyers, on our kiosks, on our Facebook page, in nixle messages. It's, the word is getting out there. And also in our e-news. Also, Councilwoman Welkowitz mentioned that the schools will be having their Walk to School Day Wednesday, so I have a perfect event for you to go to right before that. Our second weekly Wednesday walk with the mayor will be held tomorrow at 6:30 AM. I'm hoping that I'm not going to be here past midnight. And you can walk the park with me and the, our residents that have been showing up to join me in the mornings. And then when we finish there, we can walk across town to Raritan and walk with the children to either Irving or Bartle School. So 6:30 AM tomorrow on Second Avenue and Donaldson, the entrance to Donaldson Park. Be there or be square, as they say.
(inaudible)
No coffee. No coffee. Just brush your teeth before you come. Thank you, Luke. Finally, our Parket Weekend, which was mentioned earlier also. Our next Parket Celebration will be the weekend of October 23rd through October 26th. There are many organizations throughout town that will be participating, along with stores and restaurants. The event starts at 7:00 PM on Thursday, 10:23, and they end at 5:00 PM on Sunday, so there's lots to see and lots to do. Please keep your eyes open for more and more information on this. So many of you, I believe, are here tonight for our introduction of a resolution authorizing a settlement agreement with American Properties. Before we get into that, I'm going to introduce some of our professionals who've been working with us on this. Mr. Jeff Serenian, who is legal counsel, and Mr. Phil Caton, who is our planning advisor. I'd like them to brief us a bit on where we are, and I know, Phil, you have some drawings to show as well. Gentlemen?
(inaudible)
Jeffrey, grab the mic.
(inaudible) All right, this way I can see everybody.
Hold it close, Jeff, so it picks up on video.
Okay, can you, can everyone hear?
It's on.
It's not really a problem in the room, it's a problem with the video. All right, I'll, I'll try to speak loudly so everyone can hear. The main objectives in negotiating this settlement were, number one, to bring down the density as far as we could; number two, to control the appearance at the intersection of Cleveland and Janeway; and number three, to make sure the site is developed in a safe, in a manner that's safe to the public. Those were the purposes. And what we ended up with was, we ended up with an agreement where the developers, it's going to, it's going to unfold in one of three scenarios. The developer's either going to come in and develop the site as a rental project, in which case it would be 100 units. Alternatively, the developer's going to come in and develop the site as a for-sale project, in which case it would be 110 units, and we have a concept plan that shows how it would be developed at 110 units. Or the third possibility is the developer's going to come in and seek to develop it as a for-sale project and potentially run into problems selling units. And in that event, if the developer said it had funding issues or problems selling units and wanted to shift from a for-sale to a rental project, the developer would have the ability to do that under this third scenario, but however, they would be bound by the concept plan and by the site plan that was approved. So all the things that we've negotiated and all the appearances and substance of the plan for the 110 units would be retained in the event that they were to shift it over to a rental project. So that is basically how the project unfolded. In the event that it's a for-sale project, there will be 18 units, 18 townhouse units at the intersection of Janeway and Cleveland, and Mr. Caton will show you renderings of how that will look. And in the event that the site is developed as a rental project, you know, remember the three scenarios, the rental where they come in originally with 100 units, there would be 12 townhouse units at that intersection. And we also have renderings of how that will look. We have a detailed concept plan for the 110 unit for-sale project. We do not have a detailed concept plan for the rental units. In the event that the developer decides to go the rental route, they would need to come back, and we would need to work out those details. In broad brush, that's a settlement. Now, in terms of the safety aspect, it's, there's parts of the site that are contaminated and that will need to be cleaned up. And the way we ultimately structured the agreement is that before the developer can get his estimates for his bonds approved, an LSRP from the developer will have to present a plan for how the site will be developed. This site is different than the River Road site in that with River Road site, they took out all the contaminated soil and filled it back in. In the development of the American Property site, the development itself is going to form part of the cap. So it's a, it's a different scenario, and different issues are raised, and we have Bruce Koch here to provide more detail on that if you like. But the bottom line is, they're going to have to present a plan for how they're going to clean up, how they're going to develop the site in a way that protects the public health and safety, and that is going to need to be signed off by our engineer before they can implement that plan. That in broad brush is where we are. The process for this to unfold would be, ultimately, the town's going to have to sign off, the planning board's going to have to sign off, and assuming we get over both those hurdles, the agreement is subject to approval by a court in a fairness hearing. And part of this settlement is, the developer is obligated to make 5% of the units affordable. So if the developer does 100 units of rental housing, we're going to have five affordable rental units. If he does 110 units of for-sale, we're going to have six affordable rental units. So the court's going to have to be satisfied that this settlement is fair and reasonable to low and moderate income households. We had a similar hearing with respect to River Road that also had a 5% set aside requirement, and the court found it to be acceptable. So that's another aspect to this. So, but the bottom line is, the court is going to need to look at this, and the essential and non-separable condition of the settlement is the court's going to need to sign off on this. So in broad brush, that's where we are, and I think at this point, I would turn it over to Mr. Caton, and he can show you the exhibits.
Phil, you're going to need the microphone.
So walk around, Phil, you can take.
You want to bring it? You can take it out.
My apologies for this. There's never a good place to display boards in a meeting chamber with the council or the planning board on one side and the audience on another. What I'm going to do is walk you through the images that have been provided by American Properties, the developer and plaintiff in this matter, so that you can get an idea of what's proposed. And then, since I appreciate the fact that you can't see any of the detail from where you're sitting, maybe we'll put them out on the, on the table and take a break, and you can, you can inspect them more carefully. But let me at least get you oriented. The settlement agreement that is being discussed tonight is high, at least on predictability, on both sides. The borough wanted to know if it entered into this settlement agreement, what's the, what's the development going to look like? What's the site plan going to look like? What are the buildings going to look like? Didn't want to, we didn't want to leave that up to chance. The plaintiff wanted to know the same thing. So the settlement agreement obligates the developer to propose something to the planning board that's substantially consistent with the drawings that I'm going to show you. In this case, this is the site plan for the for-sale version of the alternatives that Jeff Serenian proposed. So on this drawing, Cleveland Avenue is, my apologies, Cleveland Avenue is on the bottom. Menlo Engineering is here, Janeway, Jackson, Second Avenue, the second coming through. So the, the site owned by Mr. Gross is here. It's seven and a half acres in size, as many of you know. The access to and from the site will be from Cleveland Avenue in a boulevard arrangement, and there are going to be eight townhouse units on either side. As Jeff indicated, since, since the site presents itself to the rest of the borough and to the neighborhood along this frontage of Cleveland Avenue and around the corner on Janeway, and then drops off quite a bit as it goes back towards the rail line, we saw this as the most important corner of the, of the site, and so we're particularly concerned about the presentation of this development to the community at Cleveland and on Janeway. As you, as many of you know, the crossings by Polte is immediately adjacent to this site on the south, so it comes, it comes all the way up to this, this line. There are three single-family detached homes proposed across Jackson Avenue here, and then there are multifamily buildings that step down the hill down to River Road, adjacent to the rail lines. So the townhouse buildings in this plan range from four market rate units in length to 12. Generally speaking, they face outward with a garage and an apron on the interior side of the buildings, so the circulation is through like this. There are, there are parking spaces in addition to the garages at various places around the site. Now, the planning board, even though the developer is obligated to propose something substantially consistent with this plan, the settlement agreement requires the developer to get planning board approval, just like Polte did for the River Road, the crossings development, and like every other developer does. So I'm explaining their plan to you, but it's, it's ultimately going to be the planning board's prerogative to grant site plan approval or not to the, to the development. Okay, here are two digital renderings, this of, of the site at Cleveland and Janeway, so this is if you're, as if you're standing on Cleveland Avenue looking at the corner of the development. This, this gives you a sense of both the front of the buildings as they, as they proceed down the street. The entrance is down here at the boulevard entrance, and then the side of the two buildings going on down Janeway. This is from the opposite view. This is from development, and like every other developer does. So, I'm explaining their plan to you, but it's ultimately going to be the planning board's prerogative to grant site plan approval or not to the development. Okay, here are two digital renderings, this of the site at Cleveland and Janeway, so this is if you're, as if you're standing on Cleveland Avenue, looking at the corner of the development. This gives you a sense of both the front of the buildings as they proceed down the street. The entrance is down here at the boulevard entrance, and then the side of the two buildings going on down Janeway. This is from the opposite view. This is from standing on the other side of Menlo Engineering and looking toward the river. So, we're standing here now and looking back this way. So, you can get a sense of the scale of the townhouse units on Cleveland in relation to the scale of the engineering company building. Now, I have some elevations from the developer. This is the Cleveland Avenue facade. The entrance would be on the right-hand side of this building. There are eight townhouses in this, in this structure, two and a half stories. It actually has three stories on the other side because the hill permits an exposed basement, and the developer plans to take advantage of that by using that for garage entry. So, the back of that building has three full stories, and each one of these doors, there are eight doors and there are eight garage spaces. There are also spaces outside the garage, there's space for a car to park behind the garage space, and then, of course, there's guest parking throughout the site. This building looks like this from the side. Cleveland Avenue is out here. This is the side that would be facing Janeway, and you can see a little better here that on the right-hand side, which is the Cleveland Avenue side, it's a two and a half-story structure. And here, because the way the ground falls, it becomes a three-story structure, which permits that garage entry that I mentioned. The site falls over 20 feet from Cleveland back to the rail line. This again is a rendering from the for-sale development, three-story building. This is, this is in the interior of the, of the site plan, not a perimeter building or one that you would see from the perimeter, but it has a similar architectural character and range of materials as the others. Again, this is the, an interior building with the garage is shown. So, typically, because of the garage access off the Loop Street, this is going to be the interior elevation facing into the site, whereas this would be the elevation of the buildings that face exterior property lines, except for Cleveland Avenue, which I've already shown you. I think that's, I think that's it. Now, if you'd like, I'll put these boards out in the middle, and we'll take a break. And those of you who are interested in seeing some of these images more closely can take a look.
You want to make a motion to adjourn briefly?
Attorney, do we need a motion to adjourn briefly for them to look at the boards, or can we stay?
No, we can just stand down for a bit, and they can, they can come up and take a look.
If anybody would like to come closer to see any of these, please feel free.
But if she still wants to comment, he can still comment.
You can see that there's been a vote on the comment opportunity. The only, what happened was, we had, we had the language that we wanted to use, so if your comments about the language, we're redoing the language. Why don't you stay? Why don't you stay? Tonight, he still wants to make his time to comment about the site. When will he be able to? I know, I know. When is that next public comment? This public discussion, is that about this?
It could come up at any public discussion.
So, if not, the next time--
It's like, great. Number nine.
Search and upgrade.
Steve's. Yes.
You know, right after this, there'll be, there'll be public discussion, okay? Got it?
We still have it on, absolutely. Thank you.
Well, they don't make it anymore, so I guess, you know, I'm going to use the land. Use it wisely, get your money out of it.
Okay, has everybody had a chance to look at the drawings?
Oh, right, yes.
Yes, okay. Can we, can we get back to our seats?
Now, it's close enough. It's very--
It sounded perfect.
Phil, anytime that's an issue, absolutely, absolutely.
Seventy.
You guys do your thing.
It was seventy when we came in.
Oh.
Save.
Okay, everyone, if you could take your seats. Thank you very much. Everyone has had a chance to hear the summaries presented by our professionals and to take a look at the renderings. I'd like to open this up for public discussion. Would anyone like to come forward and speak? Larry?
Yeah, Jeffrey.
And you can put it in the stand there if you like.
My name, my name is Larry Profetti, 214 Cleveland Avenue. First, I had a couple of questions. Mr. Serenian, are there any precedents for the situation that we're in as a town? And that is to say that we had, in fact, met our Mount Laurel responsibilities, but turned in, did not properly turn in the paperwork, so that it appeared that we had--
Can I speak from here, or do I need to go to the mic?
It would be good for people to be able to hear you if they're watching at home. Sorry, Jeff.
The bottom line is, on the day that they sue, the town's obligation was, in fact, greater than the number of credits that they had. There was a point in time in October 8, 2010, the appellate division invalidated the round three component of your fair share, that was 100 units. And at that point, if you looked at how many credits we had, we had enough credits to address the two other components of the fair share, but, but we were still, we were still non-compliant on the day that they sued. So, you know, and now, a new number is going to be promulgated by COA, and we're going to have to deal with that. So, it's not at all unusual that on the date that the developer sues, the number of credits the municipality has is less than its quota. And that was, in fact, the case the day that American Property sued. So, that's not so unusual.
And may I ask Mr. Serenian two things? One is, if you'd like, you can leave the microphone there and sit in the Borough Administrator's seat. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, okay. And sit over here, okay. But the other question I had, how long has this been going on? What year was it?
2009 docket, so--
And when was, when was it that we were found to be non-compliant, or?
You were non-compliant on the day that they sued. And that's the law that says you look at the state of compliance when the lawsuit is filed. You look at the status on that day, you're non-compliant.
So, that was 2009?
2009, yeah.
Okay.
We're short.
Okay.
What wasn't--
It's on.
It's on.
What was unusual was that the reason for the non-compliance was that 100-unit gross share component, and that's, that was then subsequently overturned by the courts in 2010. So, that, that part of it, in my experience, is unusual.
So, that's unusual, but it's, it's not weighed into this case in the sense that if it is unusual and it was overturned, then we have met our obligation?
Well, as Jeff said, you had an obligation in February of 2009 that included that 100 units, and you didn't have 100 units of affordable housing to meet that new construction component. So, the town was out of compliance, and that's why the builder plaintiff was able to have the judge make that finding.
And Mr. Serenian, nobody's challenged on the basis of the fact that these things have been overturned?
No, I mean, the bottom line is, the Mount Laurel world is a moving target. You know, First Appellate Division invalidated the round three component. September of last year, the Supreme Court invalidated all of the regulations. The Supreme, you know, COA's now having new regulations. We know those regulations are going to be challenged, so there's a lot of moving parts here. But the one thing that is clear is, on the date that we were sued, we were non-compliant. And that's generally what the courts look at as part of the analysis for what it takes to be a successful complaint.
Right, this is, you read Catch 22, right? This is the perfect Catch 22. It makes no sense to me whatsoever. I understand that the law doesn't always make sense.
Certainly, in the case of Mount Laurel--
Yeah.
--we're a part of it.
Yes. The other question I have before I make a comment is, in terms of the, our agreement with the people who are developing, Polte developing the front part of the properties, so they're, they're 9.5 units per acre, they have 5% affordable, and did they, did they also put up some money to help with the township's affordable obligations going forward?
My conclusion of that agreement was, they agreed to maintain the 5% set aside, not to make a contribution.
Not to make a contribution?
Yeah.
Okay. So, my opinion, having been involved in this as early as, I don't know, it feels like my entire life now, is that 14.5 units is not right for the neighborhood and is not right for the town. I know and respect the work that you two people have done, and I believe that the borough has an obligation to its community to fight something like this, not because of just what it does to the town now, you know, overtaxes our resources, but because of what it does to our town 100 years from now. You know, this, this space is, is going to use a lot more resources than the rest of that neighborhood, our community, and I think it's way beyond what our present community can afford to handle anyhow, anywhere in the borough. So, I object to the 14.5. I object to the 5%. It's an interesting part of our deliberations with the town, and some people called us out saying, hey, you can't say, you know, we don't want rentals because, after all, we're trying to get people who are in the situation where they do need affordable housing to have affordable housing. Now, having read, having read a lot about this Mount Laurel decision and its effects, one thing's clear, and that is, that if you rent to people who are in low income, they don't go up in the socioeconomic status. If you allow these people to own, they do. So, I would suggest that we more, if we're going to get stuck with this or any percentage of this, that we negotiate, not negotiate, the demand that these units be affordable homes. I also think that our interactions with the people on the front were more cooperative than the interactions that we're having with American Properties. Therefore, to give American Properties 14.5 and then say you can have 5% affordable, you know, this is, this is, this is the giveaway of the year. I think they should be made to comply with the law. If they're bringing the case based on Mount Laurel, then they should be complying with the law of 15 or 20%. I'm not sure what it is, but it's 15 or 20% affordable. And I think it should be affordable houses that people can buy and therefore move up in terms of socioeconomic status with the rest of us lucky people. All in all, I disagree wholeheartedly with the number. I think it's bad for our neighborhood. I think it's terrible for our community, and I hope you take that into account. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you, Larry. Okay, next, anybody? Okay, Lou, and then you? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Alan.
You mentioned that CME could comment on the remediation?
Yes.
Could he?
Identify yourself, please.
All right.
Identify yourself.
I'm Bruce Koch from the Borough Engineers Office, and the developer for this project, different from the Polte project, the Polte project, the soil that was contaminated was all removed from the site, new soil was brought in, and the development of Polte was on a site that was effectively clean. This project is going to be done differently. This project, many of the improvements that are placed on the site are going to be effectively be cap that treats the contamination or contains the contaminated soil. So, as part of that, the developer's going to have to do two things, as we have negotiated with them. And the first is to have their own LSRP, which is a licensed site remediation professional that prepares a plan and outlines how this project can be built in phases and how it will be implemented to ensure the safety of the public while the work transpires. And the second phase of that is, I want them to provide us with a scope of services that they will provide. I'm not interested in the monetary aspect of it, but I'm very interested in what their role will be on the project. role will be on the project, because when we're out there or anybody's out there overseeing the project, we want to make sure that all the things that we anticipated are done, and the scope of services will indicate to us whether or not those are going to be done. And if there's any challenge in the field, we have a document to turn back to and say, this was the scope of services, you have to provide care quality testing, you have to provide reports on a certain interval, all the different things that we, the LSRP and our office determine are necessary to feel comfortable with the fact that the public can come to the site to view it for sales, can move into the site, and will be safe with regard to the construction of the remainder of the site as it is done in stages in order to mitigate the contamination on the site or tackle. Does that answer that?
So, Honeywell is not doing the rest of the remediation, is that correct?
My understanding is, they are doing portions, but not all of it, and that the development of the site is completing that. I don't know the percentages or how much of which. My initial assumption was that Honeywell would be doing as they did on the adjacent site, but I was surprised later on that that is not the case, and that's why it's now being proposed in this manner.
And Mr. Koch, could you explain to us in layperson's terms the difference between excavating the way they did on the First Cleveland Avenue site versus capping on this site?
Should I address the counsel with that, or are you?
I think talk to the camera, but we can hear you.
So, on the other side, on the Pulte site that's currently under development, all the contaminated soil was removed, new soil that was free of contaminants was brought to the site, placed to spill, and then the property was allowed to be released for development because we had a letter from the LSRP indicating that the various improvements had been made and the property was available for residential development. In this particular case, that is not what they proposed to do. They proposed to have improvements such as pavement, soil being placed on top of the contamination and landscaped areas, and all of that can qualify as a CAP to contain contamination, but it will be done in stages as the project is developed. So, in order to ensure that that's being done in a manner where everybody is safe, the air quality is monitored, the soil, I mean, they could dig down to put utilities in, they could put the cap on, but then as they dig down to put utilities in, they could be bringing up soil that's below the cap. So, have to monitor that, make sure that everything they're doing is being monitored by the LSRP, and that all of the improvements are done in a manner that's safe, and air quality testing, whatever is necessary to ensure that is provided as part of that process. I'm sorry for having my back to all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Koch.
Do we, what candidates are there?
I haven't been involved with that aspect of it, but there will be a report from the LSRP that's representing the Laurel or Honeywell, and then an LSRP on behalf of the developer will be the one that interprets that and represents to us, very similar to the way we dealt with it on the board application for the prior application.
All right, now, many of you want to speak, so I'd like to call people up in the order their hands. We're not quite yet to. Lou, you were next, and then you, and then you, and then you. Okay, and then you. All right? Lou? You can use that one. You can give this to them.
Yes, I'd like to ask a specific question, Mr. Koch. Has the LSRP been determined for the rear parcel yet by either Honeywell or the developer?
The developer has identified the firm, and I've spoken in half and full with two individuals from the firm. I'm not sure if either of them were the LSRP who will be in charge of the project, but I, in a general sense, I would say yes, but in a specific manner, I can't tell you if they have three or four LSRP's and another one will wind up being the one in charge.
I was hoping that the LSRP from the Honeywell site, given his familiarity with the parcels of land, particularly since it's downhill from the uphill property, would continue. Do we have any ability to make input on asking for a continuance of the LSRP from, with Honeywell at least?
That's probably more of a legal question, but I'll tell you, during the prior hearing for the project that's currently under construction, where they said they represented the property owner and that the developer would have their own. So, I can't answer that for you, but I can tell you what happened previously when we tried to determine if that could be accomplished. But I'm trying, the next.
Yeah, it would be most appreciated if we indeed have any leverage at all to make that recommendation.
I think it might get conflict to represent it too, but I don't want to, I don't know that's truly the case, but.
It would seem to be efficient, as well as, based on the individual's performance in the front parcel, most merit, he deserves another ride. Thank you. I'd like to return to a bit for, I had wanted to talk to counsel, particularly the newer members of the governing body, and we've all heard my appeals for any number of years with regards to this. But my concern at this late date was primarily to deal with the notion of builder's remedy, or is it really builder's welfare as it goes forward? However, before I go into that, I'd like to make sure that the record shows, and I'm not sure that we've done such a good job of doing that tonight, that indeed, the reason Highland Park was vulnerable to builder's remedy was because we had not filed appropriate application with the state COA agency. And that letter that you referred to, Mr. Sereni, in February of '09 advised us that we were vulnerable to builder's remedy, invited us to participate in the resolution of that problem, and indeed, offered help for us to solve our issues. The issue, not that we were not, we had not filed an unacceptable plan, but indeed, we had filed an incomplete plan, the irony of which is, is if we had filed an unacceptable plan, we would have had, we would not have been, and I see by your smile, Mr. Kaden, that I'm taking that as an agreement, that had we indeed filled out the blanks and had an inappropriate or unacceptable plan, we would not have been vulnerable to builder's net remedy. Is your smile an affirmation of that remark?
Well, you would have been within the COA system.
We would have been within the COA. So, when, indeed, Mr. Sereni, when you say that we didn't have the credits, we may have had the credits, or all we needed was to have a plan on file. I'm tired of Highland Park getting beat up for the fact that we were not in compliance with our needs for COA. We've always taken pride, as our community has taken pride, in its diversity and meeting needs as best we could. So, let's not say that we have, we didn't have the credits and therefore now we have to pay for it down the road. The problem was, is that we didn't fill out the paperwork. Now, how do we rectify that at this late date? Can we even rectify it? That's what we've been dealing with. Please be aware, also, good people, that immediately prior to the August '09 filing, 18 months prior to that, there had been an application before the Board of Adjustment by, what was Mr. Liddell's? Avalon Bay, thank you. Thank goodness for Bruce, I mean, excuse me, for Mr. Liddell. He was his own worst enemy. At any rate, they wanted to provide, they wanted to, they had an application before the Board of Adjustment for density exactly the same, if you will, as what we are entertaining tonight. It was rejected overwhelmingly, five to one, after copious and lengthy hearings before the Board of Adjustment. So, did the Borough of Highland Park want this density then? No. Now, why do we have to accept it now because of the threat of builder's remedy? It is indeed that they, excuse me, American Properties filed in August of '09, and five years later is still trudging along. They have filed a number of concept plans. The one I saw from two years ago was identical to this, except it had 28 more affordable units on it. Now, they've mysteriously disappeared and the densities come down. They're not negotiating at all. Further, I am imploring you, good people, to stand and fight this because it makes little sense to acquiesce based on the needs of American Property. We have resolved our application before COA. Is that not correct, Mr. Kaden? Not, I'm sorry. When I said that, I meant that all of the issues that we had in terms of credits, we have went in and found that indeed, we have the appropriate number of units and so forth. We've established an agency within town to deal with our affordable housing issues. Is that correct?
At this point, I think the borough, we've been able to document adequate, more than adequate credit for both your rehabilitation fund and the reconstruction component. Now, as Jeff indicated earlier, the municipal obligations these days are a moving target. So, when I say that the borough has an adequate new construction component, that's based on rules that were in place back in 1993 and 1999. On October 20, COA is going to adopt new rules, and we're going to have a different number, and those rules are going to be challenged, and so that number may evolve. What I can say is that, as we looked into the documentation, there's a lot of affordable housing in Highland Park and a lot being rehabilitated.
Phil, can you make sure you speak into the microphone?
People can't hear you.
And the cameras won't pick it up.
Yep, sorry. So, I was saying that we've been able to document the existence of 125 units of rehabilitated housing and without, even without considering this property, over 125 new construction units. But this is, in some measure, been a result of rezonings or approvals that have been granted in recent years. The crossings is one example, the application by Kaplan for the Castle property is another. And in the world of builder's remedy, all that matters is what existed as of the day of the litigation was filed.
The other footnote I would add to that is, even with 125 rehabs, COA's new rules start the clock again on rehabs on July 1, 2014. So, if we did 125 rehabs for July 1, 2014, that doesn't count. We get a new number that comes upon COA's extrapolation, but the rehab count is on July 1, and that becomes another probably 55.
Lou, I don't want to cut you off, but there are other people who want to speak as well, so.
I just have a couple more issues.
Yeah, let's. Why don't we let some other people speak and then come back?
All right, let me just pause quickly by saying that it is quite comforting to hear your detailed and lucid explanation of problems that prior to your tenure in the Borough of Highland Park were not clear. Thank you.
At this point, could I have, I think it would be beneficial to the entire public because this weighs heavily on the fact that we are coming to, you know, some sort of legal closure. If Jeff could explain what the possible outcome might be from litigation, what our chances would be if we were to continue to litigate this, and perhaps, you know, because that's something that he informed us, but perhaps the public isn't aware of this. So, I'd like, if Jeff could explain, you know, his opinion on the possibility, possible outcomes of litigation, of rejecting this proposal and what we might lose.
Before I answer that question, I just want to put it in perspective. We had a dialogue with the neighbor, and prior to that dialogue, we had an agreement with the developer that if this all blows up, that they can't use what we would say to the neighbors against us in future litigation. I attempted that again before tonight's meeting to say, you know, give me that protection so that I could speak freely. And I said, no, I mean, it was one thing when you spoke to the neighborhood, but whatever you say, if this blows up, it becomes fair game. So, if I'm guarded in responding to you, that's why. Okay? But simply put, litigation is always a wild part for both sides. Better, but, you know, you have a master that views the world as, doesn't see the densities as offensively, what a master is for the benefit of the public, and this is really important for a layperson. In a Mount Laurel lawsuit, it's different than a normal lawsuit. What's different about a Mount Laurel lawsuit than a normal lawsuit is, in a Mount Laurel lawsuit, the judge is empowered and in fact encouraged by Mount Laurel to, to pick an expert and have that expert be, in effect, the court's advisor. Because the trial judge knows, he's going to hear the town telling one story, he's going to hear the developer telling a very different story. So, in a Mount Laurel lawsuit, the trial judge has the benefit of looking to an expert where the expert has no force in the race, and they can say, well, what do you think, Mr. Expert? The town has told me nine units an acre is appropriate, the developer wants to build the Empire State Building on the site, was reasonable. And because of the dynamic of a Mount Laurel lawsuit, the voice of that expert is very critical because they're objective, they don't have any self-interest, their only interest is in serving the court. In our lawsuit, we have a master that is not offended by high densities. That's about as much as I want to say because she would be the expert if this thing ever blows up and we have to litigate, so I don't want to offend her. But the reality is, you know, when you have the judge's expert, you know, not troubled by high densities, that is a difficult environment to operate in, particularly because in a Mount Laurel lawsuit, it's the municipal burden to prove that the proposed project is clearly contrary to sound land use planning. So, you know, developer has a project at a high density, it's got a, it's a big burden to overcome, and the judge's expert might very well cite, no problem, you know? So, in a litigated mode, you have a lot of risk. It's not to say that we could have pulled a rabbit out of the hat, but the chances are, you'd spend a lot of money, and the chances are that you want to do all that much better than you would do in the settlement. That's the reality. It would be expensive, and then you'd have this big risk that you get even higher densities.
And if I could add to that a second, the thing that makes it so hard for all of us is, on top of that, we know that we've already spent over $450,000 on this litigation. That's a lot of taxpayer money. Okay, who else would like to speak? I gave you order, put you in order before, so I think you were next.
To begin with, I'd like to point out that in this chamber. Oh, excuse me, I'm Barbara Leving, 100 North Second Avenue. Thank you. You're welcome. In this chamber, there are two doors, here and here, and that's a safety consideration in case one of the doors becomes blocked in an emergency so that you can leave safely through the other door. Now, the hundreds of people living in this Now, the hundreds of people living in this development who are living directly in front of the major northeast corridor rail line track that carries liquid propane gas, that carry industrial chemicals, that carry alcohols, do not have that luxury. They have one exit. If somebody living in those apartments panics as they're trying to get out, they could block the road very easily. This is not good. I'm not certain what you can do with it, but I really wish people would take a second look at that. The fact that it's a two-lane road, you know what Cleveland Avenue looks like. The pretty pictures over here, this looks like a big wide road, but it can't be more than a two-lane road. So what's going to happen to these people should they be living there, sir?
Ma'am, the site plan indicates that the one entrance that you're referring to, to Cleveland, from the development is what we call a boulevard. That is to say, there's a median that separates the inbound and the outbound lanes of traffic. The state regulates the standards for street design in residential developments and in order for a development like this to pass muster with the state standards, if it has only one entrance and exit, it has to be separated by a median so that if there is someone who panics on one side of the median, the likelihood is that the other lane will still be open. And that's why the median's there. So this is an area that's actually covered by state regulation interpreted by the planning board and its professionals, but that's the explanation for it.
Well, bearing in mind that Plainfield a few years had that gasoline, that gas explosion behind the apartments. If the people could consider a second emergency exit that would only be used, maybe through the side, through that development on the side of it, in the event of an emergency like this, because some cars cannot go over the curb of a median. So if they have to go over the median itself, you might have problems. I don't think it's wise to have only one exit, even if it's got a median and two lanes for people to get out. If something happens at the front of that where there isn't the median, you've got the same problem. And yes, it's an agreement with state laws and I don't know how much you can do about this, but this is a kind of safety thing that is so basic that you really would wonder about only having one entrance.
Right. And that comment is particularly, I think, valuable to the planning board when it considers this for site plan approval if it gets that far. I appreciate that. And Alan Chekell is here from the planning board and I'm sure that he'll, he and Bruce Koch will convey that at the appropriate time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Sue, and then you can...
Karen.
Oh, Karen, sorry.
Karen Swain, 55 Cleveland Avenue. I'm just, I'm going to make a comment and a question. The fact that this development is going to be, the developer is going to be capping rather than bringing in, taking out the toxic soil and bringing in fresh soil, the fact that they're going to be capping, is that also why there seems to be so much impermeable cover and almost no impermeable, I got that backwards, so much impermeable and almost no open space, no lawns, no, I mean, it's like totally asphalt and concrete. It's horrible.
I don't think they're really related. I think, I think the lack of open space that's evident in the plan or the extent of open space is really a function of trying to keep the height of the buildings down and scale with, as close as possible with the rest of the neighborhood and with the crossings coming up from the south and still from the developer's perspective, reaching that 100 or 110 unit density. So it leaves...
But doesn't the borough require a certain amount of, I mean, are the footprints allowed to be that way? I mean, can't the borough say, we need more space, we need more green? You need to cut back on your numbers of buildings.
We could negotiate for more open space. We're, I think I can predict that the developer's response would be, all right, then we're going to go up. We're not going to reduce the number of units. So if you want us to reduce the number of buildings, the buildings we do build will have to be taller.
Okay. And wouldn't this, I'm sorry Karen, but wouldn't this come up in the planning board stages if there are any requirements that we have?
Well, it will come up before then because the ordinance limits the development on the site to three stories.
Just a technical question. As it stands now, and it may be difficult to determine, are they in non-compliance with our regulations of impervious coverage or do you not know that? You know, there's a certain percentage that you are allowed to cover and certain percentage you are not. I'm just wondering if this present site plan, concept plan, if you could tell.
This site plan meets the proposed standard for impervious surface coverage, which is 70%. The plan is a little over 60% at this point. That's what I've been advised by the engineer for American Properties. So it would be in conformance with the proposed standard, but that standard is for coverage is higher than the standard on the crossings, for instance. And that only makes sense because the density is higher here. So there's more coverage and less open space.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Karen. Okay.
Hi, I'm Lois Leving, also North Second Avenue. I will leave my public parking townwide yard sale questions for the planning board. I will leave my, what if 15 years from now, the fire truck is larger and I can't see where the heck tractor trailer moving vans are going to park, assuming that's even a one-way. I'll leave those for the planning board. But I do charge, I'd like this on the record, this governing body to please check, because we've all heard that the property is 7.2 acres, which is what the deed says, 7.2 acres for the two lots in total. The one that's in the green is in the back. But over the last 10 or 20 years, I don't know if it is still current on the current tax book, this borough has been charging, the owner, not the developer, charging taxes based on a total for the two lots of only roughly 5.2, 5.3 acres. I charge you with checking that out and finding out why that discount has been going on for at least 20 years. Thank you.
Kathy, will you take a look at that?
I'll talk to the assessor.
Thank you. Okay. Sir, you've been patient.
My name is Flo Moberghain. I'm not here to talk about this ordeal, which I have no clue about it. However I asked, they told me I can talk about the sidewalk. So even though I'm going to be here in two weeks. First of all, I'm kind of nervous, so please excuse me. Before I start, I just heard a $400,000 so far and nothing has gone. My question is, and I have no clue, please, and I'm not trying to offend anybody, are you guys retained by the Highland Park or are you guys working for Highland Park?
Let me lead into that, okay? The $450,000 is the total amount that's been spent so far on all expenses related to this. And that's because the borough was brought into the courts. And as far as nothing being done, this, we've come quite a long ways from back then. Most of us were not even here when it all started. That's how long it's been going on.
I understand.
And they are retained to work for the borough on this particular case?
Since they are retained, would you be kind enough, if possible, to tell me when is surrender so we're not going to go to any bigger expense? Is there a point that you guys have a limit for surrender? That's it, no more expense?
So it's not really up to them, it's up to the, you talk to us about it.
Please, I'm sorry guys.
Yeah, and that's, this is...
That's to you guys.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there a point?
This is exactly what we grapple with all the time because, you know, we're weighing, what is the best thing for Highland Park in the present and in the future? It galls me to look at the amount of money that's been spent on this, but we can't take back history. You know, things that happened in the past, we can't change them. We can only try to make things the best we can for now and for the future. I hear your frustration and I probably feel it more than you do.
I understand. My point is, is there a point we should stop the bleeding?
Essentially, we are here now to discuss that type, a settlement, which would essentially stop the bleeding. Whether we do decide to do that or not will be based on the public input.
Right. And that's what we're here for.
I'll move on to the sidewalk. By force, I had to change my side to fix my sidewalk that, to my opinion, should never should have been fixed because it was half an inch. One side was bigger than the iron and I was at no point or authority to challenge anybody. That's the way it is. The lady marked the arrows there and bingo. Consequently, we fixed it. Now we hear it's overturned.
Would you like to address that, Borough Attorney?
Well, the sidewalk repair program was not overturned. We were told by the court to come in with standards that everyone could read and we're doing that in the form of a new ordinance. But the folks that were required to fix their sidewalks were supposed to fix their sidewalks.
Okay. I have a question to the lovely panel here. At what point, when a human being earn a dollar and everybody should pay taxes, at what point enough is enough with taxes? At 10%, at 50%, at 70%? I mean, is anybody can tell, is 90% it's okay? I just want to know. At what point?
Yeah. We have this issue that we face, every municipality in New Jersey faces this issue. Yeah...
Not like Highland Park?
Well...
I was raised 575% since I live in my house. I would like to know who's in the panel here, anybody or anybody here in the audience that in those, all those years had their earning income was increased by 575%?
Yes.
At some point, I'm sorry, at some point, somebody, you guys are human just like us.
Right.
Just like the gentleman says. We're trying about the diversity. We have rich people, we have poor people, we have colored people, we're all singing Gombeia, everything is beautiful. I'm colored. Everybody's singing Gombeia, everything is okay.
Yeah, I...
At certain point, some people make more than the other and that herd of cows, some of them they can, you can get a 20 gallon of milk out of the cows and some of them you can't.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. It's a very difficult thing to balance. We have schools that contribute to your taxes, we have the library. I hear what you're saying and it's something that we grapple with every year. There is a 2% cap on tax increases.
It was more than 2%, they said.
Right. And if you read the letter, it'll explain to you where it came from.
I read it. No, I understand it. But what I'm saying is, at this time, since 2008, everybody's, there is a price, come by everybody.
Yeah.
Please, please. Everybody's, instead of tightening up the belt, so this time we're going to do Bartel. Every year there is a fixing, okay, they need it. But one time we'll paint two rooms less and in their house, we're going to do one thing less and the park, one thing, tighten up a little bit. We don't have a blank check. You guys just signing up the checks. That comes from regular people.
Yeah, I wish you could see the process that we go through.
I know the process. I live here 20 years.
Yeah, no, I'm saying to see the process that we go through here and what our borough administrator and finance person has to do to keep our expenses down. What I would love to do, sir, is come in and talk with me and the finance administrator and we'll go through all of this with you.
I know people with disability and they have a problem with their taxes. They have only $200 discount.
I know.
$200 discount out of a $10,000? I live in Grove Avenue. My entire street vacant it, they all left. They're already, they can't handle it anymore. Myself and another one across the street from me, we're the only people left there.
Yeah.
It's like a train station. Nobody can afford it. When is the time to find out, we're dealing with human being, this is not Chase Manhattan that we just write the checks. It's coming from some people that they come up. And now I know where there's not many people around here. They all try to make a living in order to pay their taxes over here. And by that I close and thank you very much for the opportunity. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments? Sue?
A couple of points. I think and a lot of my neighbors feel the same way, that this developer, American Properties, is arrogant beyond belief. The audacity of using the loophole of affordable housing and then having 5% affordable housing is really embarrassing and that they can get away with that of putting us through all of this by using that loophole and then only providing five units or six units is despicable. Secondly, I understand the issue with the master. Since I am not in a position to have legal, not being able to talk, the charming master has told us things like we should be happy with 18 units would be a wonderful settlement for Highland Park, 18 units per acre. She used those, told us that in her own words, that she believes in high density. So I understand we're in a difficult situation there. When it was first, when we first saw this proposal at 14 units per acre, my first thought was, oh, it's not so bad. I thought we were going to get 18 or 20. But looking at it, I agree with Karen, that's a lot of cement. And that's a really small piece of property and it's an ugly piece of property surrounded by industrial properties. So I think it's just going to be even uglier if that matters. Thirdly, I want to talk about traffic and not so much, you know, the sky is falling and trains are exploding, but just the fact that all these cars are going to have to go out onto Cleveland Avenue. And that's not just Cleveland Avenue. So it's not just the Cleveland Avenue people bitching again. Those cars are going to go on Harrison Avenue and Madison Avenue and Second Avenue. And why are these developers allowed to decide that there is no through road to connect the two properties? Because they don't want it? Sorry, we don't want it on Cleveland Avenue, so maybe we need to compromise. We've been told that, well, the elevation is different, they can't build a road through there. Excuse me, they have bulldozers. I've seen what they're doing to rearrange the topography in the Polte property. Don't tell me they can't connect those two properties with a road because the elevation is different. They have bulldozers and giant earth movers. That can be done. So the fact that they, the Polte doesn't want traffic coming through their property? Too bad. It's not a gated community, it's a public thoroughfare. And the fact that this development is going to put all that traffic out onto Cleveland Avenue to go one way or the other, option is that there could be, yeah, they're going to still use Cleveland Avenue, but they could also go through the Polte development. There could be two ways for these cars to move through. And for these developers to say, well, we don't want it... And for these developers to say, well, we don't want it, that's arrogant beyond belief also. So I understand that we may not be able to fight the density, although I think it's too high, it's too much cement, it's too many buildings, it's going to look hideous. But, you know, I think there are other things that we need to think about to ameliorate what's going on, and one of them is definitely the traffic patterns. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Georgie London, 21 Cleveland Avenue.
Could you repeat your name, please?
Georgie London, 21 Cleveland Avenue.
Thank you.
And I was just asked to mention that, the concern that, can our, I think it was, can our schools handle? Is that what it was, Mrs. Bigheart? Can our schools handle all this new families that will be coming to town? But I just wanted to register my feeling, which, you know, I realize I'm repeating what other people have said, but it looks to me like we'll be building some big eyesore that we don't want to have in Highland Park. And that it's just not what our community is. It's very urban-looking, and that's not what Highland Park is. It doesn't fit into, you know, what our community is. So I would say, we don't want to settle for this. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other, Lou, you wanted to finish your discussion? No one else? Thank you for holding back to let other people speak for a while.
Lou Pidginsen, 200 Jackson Avenue, again. As an aside, I'd like to congratulate the governing body, and particularly the staff headed by Ms. Kovacs, in dealing with absolute dire situation that we've had for so many years. Folks, talk about taxes going up, but don't recognize that our staffing has gone way down. So we have a lot less folks doing a lot more work. So thank you, good people. And that goes out to the chief and his staff, as well as you good people at Borough Hall. Tax became a very dirty word, and it, just as a, without even knowing it anymore. I mean, the number 450,000 draws gasps from folks, okay? And how could we spend that much money? Well, 450,000, let's see, we're now, we've got a viable COA mechanism in place, which we didn't have before. We were threatened by a summary judgment on the front property of 36 units per acre. 36 units per acre! Now how much would that have cost the town? How much have we saved by expending this money? Is it a cost of 450, or is it money well-spent? And I'm sure that that 450 is not specifically related to these good folks. I'm sure that a lot of other money has been spent on, in that number. So what is the purpose of government, other than to distribute the public monies in good and diligent fashion? This is money well-spent, Mayor, and thank you. Thank you for, to yourself, and thank you particularly to your predecessor, Mayor Minkoff, who saw fit to engage and spend some of the money. When we came with hat in hand a couple of years ago and said, hire experts, please, and we were met with the same attitude. We can't spend that much money, good people. Well, we spent it, and it was money well-spent. Where do you get 36? We wound up with nine. Nine units per acre, which hat, by the way, is contin, how to say? Contiguous, not really, but consistent, that's the con word, consistent with our neighborhood's densities. So that was, as I've said already a number of times, money well-spent. Unfortunately, the legal standing with regard to the rear parcel is not as strong as it was in the front parcel. We understand that. However, I don't come as much with hat in hand this time as we did. When we initially talked with Mayor Nolan about this, he was telling us, go for 24 units per acre. Don't you dare, guys, roll the dice. 24 units per acre. We said, you know what, Mayor Nolan, we'll roll the dice. And guess what? We came up with nine. Okay, do we want to roll the dice? No, but we want to make judicious choices in how we spend our money. And that's what you folks are considering here. I've heard Councilperson Malley speak to the fact that how much value, and it was addressed by Council Serenian, how much value here is, you know, how much we bang for the buck are we going to get? And that's the issue really, isn't it? What have we spent to go from 15 to nine? Because after, well, not because, but when we got nine in the front, we were told by the governing body, that's excellent standing because now that'll impact the rear parcel. We can go back to Judge Paley's court and say, you know what? They were able to come forth with a development that was nine units per acre. How about the rear parcel, which is owned by Highland Park folks? We should have a bit more of a conscience in this matter than Honeywell, who has really no conscience, at any rate. Please understand, for you folks who have not been in Judge Paley's courtroom, when these good folks say that the state of COA is completely, what was the term that you guys referred to as?
Unpredictable.
Unpredictable, yes, at least. But when I saw Judge Paley defer to Ms. Council Serenian, I was shocked. The bench deferred to Mr. Serenian, acknowledging him and his expertise as one of the leading experts in the state, if not the leading expert. We hired the right person here. $450,000 money well-spent, thank you. The other aspect of this is that McKenzie, who we've been told again and again...
Thank you. I'm not going to be my publicist.
Council, excuse me, Council Serenian, thank you. Okay. When we've been told that McKenzie, excuse me, Ms. McKenzie is favor, will favor higher development numbers, we already knew that. She chided the front developer for caving down to a low number. I mean, this person is really flit. I had to deal with my dear wife, who was told by, who asked Ms. McKenzie in chambers some months ago, as, informing her that Avalon Bay failed at 15. We had asked to defer to my dear partner. What was her response?
We should have taken that, honey.
"We should have taken that, honey." Okay, that's Ms. McKenzie's attitude. However, there was a change in attitude when Mr. Catan came on the scene. She, all of a sudden, became deferential. And I am pleading with you good people to set these two gentlemen in a position to battle. Why? Because we don't want 15 units per acre. And it's not doing COA any good. It's like, it's like the damn levees in New Orleans. When the money was appropriated and we never got to the people. This money that is COA's using is going to American Properties. Do we want to stand for that? Does anybody doubt that? That 15 units per acre is, will provide them with a profit? We've heard them, as Ms. Pitt expressed, we've heard them prevaricate on any number of occasions. They can't get the money. Yet down the street of Piscataway, they were building $750,000 units. They're going to say what it is to make a lot of money. Please, it is money well-spent. Spend more, let's fight. If we indeed are fighting on behalf of COA units, then damn it, let's get some COA units.
Okay. Karen?
We'll get your bronze one.
This doesn't relate at all to this issue, but I see, I'm a little bit confused because I'm going to need to make a statement before the Borough Council passes or rejects the Resolution Number 18. And if I wait until the end, when there are more comments, and the resolution is already passed, then there's nothing I can do about it. So when do I make my comment? When do I make that statement? Now? Okay, you can make it now. Okay. For those who don't know what I'm talking about, it's about the Resolution to Release a Performance Bond Concerning Overlook, which is a Polte project at the corner, at the intersection of Cedar Lane and River Road. STACK's mandated tasks include an advisory role under the provisions of the Borough's Tree Removal and Protection Ordinance. In Section 388-13, it provides, in pertinent part, the following. "No performance bond shall be released except on certification of the Department of Code Enforcement with advice from the STACK and the DPW that the replacement tree or trees remain healthy one year after planting. If they are found at that time by DPW or its agents to be healthy and capable of surviving and other performance requirements have been met, then the Department of Code Enforcement shall order the bond returned. If any trees are not at that point healthy, the trees shall be replaced or payment made to the Tree Replacement Fund." Now, all the replacement trees at Overlook were not healthy one year after planting. STACK submitted to the Planning Board a memo one year after the trees were planted at Overlook, providing details about which specific trees and other plants had died before one year or were not capable of surviving as required by the ordinance. To date, STACK has not received any information that either the trees were replaced or that appropriate payment has been made to the Tree Replacement Fund. STACK has also not advised the Department of Code Enforcement that the replacement trees, if any, have remained healthy. We therefore urge the council not to release the performance bond until those requirements of the Borough's ordinance have been met, whichever, which includes the required advice from the Shade Tree Advisory Committee. Thank you, Ms. Wayne. Gentlemen, do we know what Ms. Wayne is referring to?
I don't think we've all ever seen that letter.
It's in the, it should be in the minutes.
Okay, in light of us not being aware of this letter, I'd like to table or pull that motion out of the, that resolution out of the consent agenda.
Thank you.
So, do we do that now, or when we start the consent agenda?
We'll start the consent agenda.
Sorry, now?
No, when you do the consent agenda.
Okay, all right. Okay. Yes, go ahead. Wait, you have to say your name.
I'm interested in how many black families, doing how many one bedroom, two bedrooms, what, you know, how many people are expected, and is it going to get walls, etc., when it's downtown, I mean, do they have to be, things like that?
They propose a solid six-foot-tall fence along the rail line. And as to the number of bedrooms, I don't believe they've indicated how many bedrooms they're planning for the market rate units. The bedroom distribution on the handful of affordable units is set by the state. The settlement agreement requires them to provide a report on how many schoolchildren are expected based on the demographic standards as part of their planning board application. And that's sensitive to the number of bedrooms. So they'll be disclosing all that before the planning board. No.
Okay, any other, yes, Carol?
Carol Thompson, 216 Cleveland. And I need to echo Lou's point of view about, I'm not interested in profligate spending, but I'm interested in judicious, smart spending to deal with a problem that I think is particularly important to a town like Highland Park, but a neighborhood like ours. And this kind of density would have a terrible impact on the neighborhood. Clearly, I'm not the only one who's mentioned the idea that there would be a big impact on schools. Somebody mentioned that we were at 93% capacity. I don't know if that's true. I have no clue. But clearly, there's a lot of resources to be used here. And I think that, I think that smart spending and smart argument is what's called for here. And I think, I'm delighted to hear about the progress on the front property. I think there's progress on the back property. You know, I find the notion of just covering, covering up all of the dirty secrets a little bit queer. But, you know, if that's, if that meets the letter of the law, I guess we go for it. You know, just slide dirt and cement over it, and it'll be okay because, you know, nobody's going to get sick or anything like that. In any case, I just think that we need to continue to persevere and do the very best we can. I don't think that we should necessarily take the first offer or the second offer. Clearly, you've been through this for a while, so I understand, and I understand the problems. But I think that we need to do what we have to do. Taxes are to be spent for smart purposes. You know, government is not, and democracy is not necessarily efficient. And I think that we need to move ahead at the pace we have in front of us and do what we have to do. It just takes time.
Thank you, Carol. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Go ahead, no, I just saw somebody behind you, that's all.
Larry Profetti, 214 Cleveland. Since this question of money comes up again and again, $450,000, I assume that we don't know how much it costs the borough per unit in density in this particular situation, or in any situation going forward? How much more it will cost the borough? And I believe that, you know, $450,000 versus the actual cost between nine units and 14.5 units is probably minuscule over time, over five years, over 10 years, over 20, minuscule. And I plead that you take that into account, that we are not just talking about money we've spent already. It's my money too, okay? I'm thinking about the money that we will have to spend so that others make money based on a mistake that we made forever, as we pay more and more money forever. So please take that into account. If FDR didn't do that, we'd be in a very, very different world. Because everybody in America was saying, oh, you can't afford it, we're in a depression, you can't get into World War II, you can't do this, and you can't do that. And he said that, you know what? You guys aren't thinking straight. So please think straight when you make this, when you make this decision. Thank you very much.
If there's no other public comment, I'll close the public comment session. I do want to say something here. I think there's been some very meaningful discussion tonight. I think the issues of planning for our future, as you've probably heard me say 100 times, is very important. And that's why we've put together this Capital Expenditure and Planning Task Force that has already started working, to look at the development that we already have in process, what's in the pipeline, what our infrastructure currently can handle, and what we might need going forward. I think it's critical to look at that, and I appreciate you, several of you brought that up. What I'd like to do, given all of these comments, is I'd like to table our discussion or our...
voting on this resolution tonight. I'd like to hear what our planning board also has to say about this project. They are also representatives of our community. And I'd like a motion to table this resolution and take it back up at our first meeting in November.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Do we do a roll call or...do we do a roll call or...
To be safe, I would do a roll call and announce the date of that is the 12th of November. Is that right, John?
Next...
Our first meeting in November is the 12th.
It's a Wednesday.
So this matter would be on the agenda again on the 12th of November. A roll call would be good, John.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Thank you all. And thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Okay, we have other business to conduct tonight.
At this time, I'd like to ask that the Clerk table the Number 10, or we can take a vote on it. That's the bond ordinance for sidewalk improvements for...wait. No, I'm sorry. That's...no, it'd be...
That's later on the consent agenda.
Number 14. Would we do that now, if we are in fact going to pull Number 14? That's the sidewalk improvement ordinance?
It looks like 14 and 15 have to be...
Hey, you can do it when you get married.
Okay, whatever. We'll go by order then.
14 and 15.
Right up to the people.
Thank you, guys. Good night.
Thank you. Clerk, would you report on advertising of a bond ordinance for sidewalk improvements for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
Bond ordinance providing for various sidewalk improvements in the Borough of Highland Park County of Middlesex State and New Jersey appropriating $100,000 and authorizing the issuance of $95,000 in bonds has been duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title. An affidavit's a publication on file. The ordinance is posted, made available for public inspections required by law, and the supplemental debt statement that was filed in the Clerk's office was filed prior to introduction, was received by the Division of Local Government Services on September 16, 2014.
May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Any public hearing? Okay. May I have a motion to adopt or reject?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, roll call?
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Clerk, will you report on advertising a bond ordinance for various roadway improvements for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
Bond ordinance providing for various roadway improvements in the Borough of Highland Park County of Middlesex State and New Jersey appropriating $1.4 million and authorizing the issuance of $1,330,000 in bonds was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title. An affidavit's a publication on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law, and the supplemental debt statement filed in the Clerk's office prior to introduction was received by the Division of Local Government Services on September 16, 2014.
May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any public hearing? Mrs. Picard.
I just want to know whether the roadway at the end of my block on South Third and Magnolia is going to be repaired. You did the paving beyond that, and you stopped there, and they constantly keep patching up. It's very hard for me to cross the street without my toes getting caught.
Okay. Yeah. We'll find out.
There are many roads, unfortunately, in Highland Park in need of repair, so it may not be in this four-year plan, but we do have a list of all the roads.
I'll ask for you.
We'll check on that for you.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Any other public discussion on this? All right. The Resolution to adopt or reject and advertise an ordinance on final reading by title. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Clerk, will you report on advertising a bond ordinance for acquisition of garbage receptacles and recycling buckets for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
Bond ordinance providing for acquisition of garbage receptacles and recycling buckets Borough of Highland Park County of Middlesex State and New Jersey appropriating $100,000 and authorizing the issuance of $95,000 in bonds has been duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title. An affidavit's a publication on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law, and the supplemental debt statement filed in the Clerk's office by the Finance Director prior to introduction was received by the Division of Local Government Services on September 16, 2014.
Okay. Any public discussion on this? All right.
You need a motion to take it up for final reading?
May I have a motion to take this up on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
And no public discussion, right? Okay. Resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion to adopt and reject?
You did that.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Motion to adopt.
You did that already. Roll call. Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Clerk, will you report on advertising the traffic ordinance amendment for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Highland Park Chapter 7 Traffic was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title. An affidavit's a publication on file. The ordinance was made available for public inspection as required by law.
May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion? Second.
Any public comment? Resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title. May I have a motion to adopt or reject?
Motion to adopt. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
And may I have a motion to table numbers 14 and 15, please?
Motion to table those numbers?
Second.
Do you need a roll call? Roll call, please.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Am I allowed to take a question from residents at this point, or...
It's a simple one, having nothing to do with what you probably want to ask.
You have to identify yourself.
Well, there's another public comment section.
Can it wait till the public comment section?
It'll be there in a minute.
Okay. Clerk, will you report on introduction of traffic ordinance amendment for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
Just have to get one number on 260. A lot of papers.
An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Highland Park Chapter 7 Traffic has been introduced in writing by the Public Safety Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Clerk, will you report, please, on the introduction of ordinance authorizing termination and extinguishment of a sanitary sewer easement for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance by the Borough of Highland Park County of Middlesex State and New Jersey authorizing the release, termination, and extinguishment of a portion of a sanitary sewer easement through a portion of Block 181 Lot 43 on the Borough of Highland Park tax map has been introduced in writing by the Public Works and Public Utilities Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. May I have a motion to pull item Number 18 on the consent agenda?
Motion to pull item Number 18.
Second.
One more.
And Number 30.
Oh. What is 30? Okay. And a motion to pull Number 30 on the consent agenda as well. Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, consent agenda. Motion to adopt the following items. Resolution to approve the bills list. Resolution to approve the taxi operator licenses for 2015. Resolution to authorize the Borough Engineer to fiscal year 2015 DOT Trust Fund Grant Application. Resolution to approve the taxi owner licenses for 2015. Resolution to approve the RFQ for Professionals 2015. Resolution to advertise for receipt of bids for 2015-2016 tree maintenance contract. Resolution to advertise for receipt of bids 2015-2016 water and sewer contracts. Resolution to credit water and sewer account 1119 Raritan Avenue. Resolution to authorize reimbursement of fees 11 Lewis Street. Professional Services Resolution CME Associates 2014 roadway improvements. Resolution to amend membership of Capital Improvements Planning Task Force. Resolution to amend annual salary resolution. Resolution to approve final payout to Kathy Senior. Resolution to authorize agreement to participate in electronic tax sale pilot program. Should I do the mayor points?
No. Motion for this one first.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
I have a question, Mayor. On Number 33?
Yes.
Authorized electronic tax...what taxes would that apply to?
Borough Administrator, would you like to...
That is our...every year, the Borough of Highland Park is on an accelerated tax sale. After the 11th day of the 11th month of our fiscal year, which for us is November 11th, we are required by state to try to collect all our taxes that are due that are delinquent for 2014, and these are liens that we would be selling.
So these are property taxes?
Yes, they are.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. I am making the following appointments. Nancy Wolf to the Capital Improvements Planning Task Force. The following people are being appointed to Sustainable Highland Park. Wendy Rosen, Hallie Conrad, Sarah LeBeau. May I have a motion to confirm?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
All right. Public discussion, Lois. Okay, two quick questions. Lois Leving North, Second. Executive Session Resolution, is there any tonight? No. I don't think so. No. Okay. My question from before is, whenever the sidewalk repair ordinance, which was tabled, the amendment, whenever that amendment is brought back onto the agenda, will Bruce Koch or Representative from CME be in attendance again? We can make that happen. So that's a yes. That's what I want to know. Thank you. Okay. Mrs. Picard.
This is a teacher in me that's going to be speaking. The next time you have a meeting of this nature, first of all, I didn't know that you were having this issue in Cleveland Avenue. My ignorance. But it would seem to me more prudent to have all your business agenda first and then have this topic, which is time-consuming. My little dog is waiting for me, and it's seven minutes past my normal bedtime.
I'm sorry that we kept you out so late. I don't know if legally we're allowed to change the agenda around. That's something we can discuss.
Part of our reasoning is also, since the majority of people were coming out for a certain issue, that, you know, it's a balancing act. So we apologize if we inconvenienced you.
No, I really think from a practical standpoint, let these people come in here sometime. They never come out. How many? One, two, three. I can count on one hand usually the public that comes. Let them hear what some of the issues are in the Borough and how their money is being spent, rather than they have their say. You don't limit the time that they can talk, and it just drags it out. So I think you might want to consider some alternatives.
Yeah. And also about your not being aware of that part of the discussion. Besides the electronic media we've been using lately, we recently set up two kiosks in town where we're putting up flyers about all of the things that go out, you know, on Facebook and E-News and all the other electronic media. One is located on North...I'm sorry, on, yeah, North Second Avenue and Raritan, and the other is over by the Irving School on Woodbridge Avenue. This way, there are many of our residents that don't get to see things electronically. If you want to take a walk...I know you walk.
I love a walk.
So every now and then, check the bulletin board, and you'll see all of these announcements up there.
Well, I haven't seen it so far. Nothing that I've received in the mail for the...
Yeah, it didn't go by mail. But...
Until recently, this was all, in a sense, confidential, since it involved litigation. So this is a kind of coming-out party, so to speak. It's past my bedtime, too.
Are we done? Yeah, it's past mine, too. Are we done with public discussion? I'm actually losing my voice. May I have a motion to adjourn to conference?
So moved. So moved.
Second? Second? I heard two so moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Do we have it?
Thank you.
Do we have anything?